These are questions specific to discussing the bypass or reroute and certain implications.
Isn't this supposed to be a time for the public to speak?
Yeah, that's it.
Good.
Turn your mic on. Yeah, I think your mic is off.
I don't need a mic, I guess. What bothers me is I think this is a time when people are beginning to realize that the traffic is getting so bad that we do need to do something. And I don't think it really is connected with the bridge necessarily. Something's going on in this town. I moved here about two years ago and it's terrifying for me to try and cross the streets sometimes. People still run their red lights, the traffic is terrible. Has anyone... If you build four lanes under that bridge, what slows traffic down now is the fact that they have to be careful. They have to kind of go one car here, one back here. They can't go side by side. That slows it down. If you get all these lanes on there, those cars are going to go flying through our town. It's bad enough already. Truck traffic is terrible. What do we have to do? Wait for a kid gets killed on the road coming home from school? I mean, this is a serious, serious issue. And I know I used to live in Oregon and I go to Portland a lot. Portland has a truck bypass where the trucks can give up and stay away from the downtown if possible. Something like that, just to eliminate... And boy, I'll tell you, if the gas industry comes in here, you have no idea what it's going to be like when those gas trucks come through.
Okay, so a couple of different comments there. Just a question about, look, you know, the narrowness of the bridge adds some value for some people. It slows down the traffic, you know, makes it a little bit slower coming into downtown. Isn't that a good thing? Is that something, you know... So there's one question there. And a second question around sort of truck traffic as it pertains to a bypass. So does anybody want to take a stab? And I'm going to try and keep you guys, you know, try and be pretty brief in your responses.
Okay, I'll tackle the speed one that's come up quite a bit. Of course, the new alignment is curved, so that curved piece also adds some traffic calming with it. One other idea that would come up with the study team is to give your speed feedback and one that's driven out in Midland, you know, you can be aware of how fast you're going and, you know, I don't know if the city would be interested in trying to tie that with any kind of enforcement, but having lived here 30 years, I know where I can... Well, I just don't speed. Except by your house, Cheryl. It's everybody's. But, you know, and I guess something, you know, we'll find out a little bit more when the council votes on or takes a position, hopefully, on the access control plan about what kind of an intersection that's going to be at Eighth and Grand.
Does anybody else have a comment? Maybe here's what I'd like to hear. Jim, you've worked in a lot of communities around the West. Are there ways to address that calming, that traffic calming question that's being asked, one? And two, do you have experience with places that have figured out a way to reroute truck traffic without rerouting everything else? You have five seconds.
Yes and no.
He messed with me all the time.
Traffic calming is a concern everywhere. We... One of the first things we did as part of the project with the Downtown Development Authority was make the recommendation to the city and to CDOT that there be a full movement intersection at Eighth and Grand with a traffic signal. And that provides... It doesn't entirely address the issue that's being raised, but it does help, certainly. And I think that will come to pass and so I think that's beneficial. There are other things that you can do and I think they're important. To some degree, the congestion itself slows things down. Your actual, your greatest risk of somebody being hurt by a speeding vehicle is probably in the off-peak time periods, late at night or in the middle of the day. And we are still working for Downtown Development Authority on the question of could there be some traffic calming measures that you put in? As far as, we don't in the United States make, build roads for trucks and roads for cars. One of the basic principles that we've always had, we've been here too, and I don't think you cannot do it, is that if we build a road, it's for everybody to use. And so I don't think you could build a truck road. That would just be for trucks. And I don't think the money would be there for that. So the issue of how do we get trucks around Glenwood is the issue of can we have a bypass? So this is the second question.
Okay, there's a question back here.
Is that working? The question that I have as far as traffic is, we keep talking about traffic, but I think we should be talking about pedestrians. And I'm not hearing loud and clear how, not how we're mitigating all this, but how we actually are moving to improve from our current situation, which is pretty paltry for people crossing streets in this town. So if you have some insight on how we act, how any of these projects or angles on these projects can actually improve safety and accessibility for pedestrians, I'd like to hear about it.
That is a great question and that is a lot of what led us to alternative three. It moves that 82 traffic off of Sixth Street. I think anyone that, my office is off of Sixth Street. I see it all the time when I drive in the summertime. Hotel Row is out that way. You see the out-of-towners with a couple of kids and the rubber duck already inflated and walking down and trying to cross 82 a couple of times. So you're really going to see a serious improvement in pedestrian mobility over on, you know, a reconfigured Sixth Street. And I know that the DDA is working very closely with the city to try to make, and you're firm to make some positive enhancements there, too.
Yeah, we absolutely agree. Pedestrian first, there's no doubt about it. Downtowns require good walk environments. Good walk environments lead to healthy downtowns.
But where is it improving in like in our core? I'm sorry, but I just want to sit here, but the follow-up is important here. The core is Eighth and Ninth. And we're talking about sacrificing what we should be improving to the heart of, for the heart of the town. How are we not just saying we're going to mitigate it and that'll involve us doing something here and doing something there? How are we going to not lose the heart and soul of our town?
So you're redirecting the question, say, okay, that's good on Sixth Street, but what about the core of, you know, Seventh, Eighth, Ninth, Third?
Right. And we'll show some images in a little while. We are, we are working on that and I do agree with your premise. So step one is to keep, signalize intersections at Eighth and Ninth, in my opinion, so that people can get across. You know, we have many communities. We've worked in Jackson, Wyoming, which has 60,000 cars a day in the summer on Broadway and North Cash. They've decided not to do a bypass, but they are very focused on pedestrian safety and the signals matter a lot. Steamboat Springs, same thing. I think it's close to 40,000 cars a day. And they made the decision not to do a bypass in there, but they're very focused on trying to narrow the street. So we, I don't know where we're going to go with the details of that. We are working on the, how does a pedestrian bridge across the Colorado River touch down? Our recommendation, we think, will be that it touch down at Seventh and that you reemphasize Seventh. Seventh is a sort of hidden gem that's never really become all it could be. We're talking about, we're showing some images in a little while of some of this, but a really rethinking how that pedestrian work, movement works on Seventh with a promenade that might connect all the way over to the Confluence site. And we do need to do some more work on the crosswalks and the signal timing on Grand I'm not being critical of CDOT, but those signals are not pedestrian signals, they're traffic signals. And those buttons don't empower the pedestrian. They are designed to limit how much delay is provided for the traffic. So they're what we call Captain May-I buttons. If you don't push them, you can't cross the street. And so the, some of you played Captain May-I when you were a kid, so you know what I'm talking about. This is a game where if you don't do it right, you gotta go back. So the, I do think there are things we should do and we are working on those things. And I don't have more details yet.
Do you guys have anything else you want to add to that?
You know, the access control plan, that was probably one of the biggest things we heard with pedestrians, especially downtown. And, you know, a couple of things that we really listened to is try to find other opportunities for pedestrians to get across 82. Obviously, the best is grade separation, meaning they either go over or go under the highway. One of the things that we thought was 12th Street. There is actually a pass that goes under 12th Street on 82. It needs to be improved, but that's an opportunity. Joe, I believe your project is looking to put a underpass between Seventh and Eighth Streets for pedestrians. So those are things that are going to improve.
Let me express, let me just express what many people in the audience are thinking, which is that downtowns are places where people walk on sidewalks and there are storefronts and there's on-street marketing. And we know, we all know how to live in that kind of, we know how to shop, we know, we see that when people drive through, they see the buildings, they see the sidewalks in the street and they say, oh, it's a downtown. They know what it looks like. Grade separations don't go downtown. Grade separations are suburban situations. The, having a, the ability to walk under the bridge and can move that closer to Eighth makes a lot of sense. It's a good, it's a good thing. But our experience is that if the walk, the difference between the straight line walk distance that you can see and what we call the desire line, and the actual walk distance you have to follow is more than about 1.4, you start getting jaywalking. And we've had this conversation with engineers that probably if you didn't have signals at Eighth and Ninth and so forth, that people, you'd have to actually fence or somehow barricade the crosswalks and you wouldn't have jaywalking. So I mean, I think we have to realize that Glenwood Springs doesn't, can't build a new downtown somewhere. This is their downtown, has to be their downtown. Pedestrians are essential to downtown. Pedestrians are going to have to cross Grand Avenue. And in that, we're going to have to cross it. For Mike.
Clark, I think you need to take some questions out here. These people all came tonight to talk. I'm not trying to hold anybody back, I just also want to give people a chance to talk. So I know that the next one was over here, Penet's there.
Recently, at a city council meeting, one of the councilmen suggested that our only option for a bypass will cost $400 million to $500 million, and there's no way we could do that. Isn't there a way to take a substantial amount of the traffic off of Grand Avenue without spending $400 million to $500 million? Have we really thoroughly explored some options for substantially less money?
So this is a phenomenal question, which is actually an entire topic we're going to talk about. So I will give you guys a choice. We can either move into this question of isn't there, are there other options we can look at? Or, you know, for the money? Or other, to get this done? Is there some way we can improve some of these questions? And why don't you guys just start now by saying, you know, yes, I think there are, or these are the best options? And then let's, let's open that up for more discussion in the conclusion.
One thing I'd really like to stress is, you know, you ask about an EIS and when you start that process or even a planning and environmental linkages process, you're going to look at everything, you know? You can't go in with a predetermination that it's going to be a bypass on the rail corridor, you know, the raft-to-transit corridor. You know, I think they have a fairly strong position about what they want to see on their corridor. Besides that, there's also the UPRR, controls the Y.
What's the UPRR, real quick?
The Union Pacific Railroad. So you could go into this and come out with something that's not a bypass or a relocation. It could be a transit solution. You know, certainly in the corridor optimization plan, it talks about improving local connectivity. You know, one-third of the traffic on Highway 82 is completely local. You know, that was me today, rode my bike yesterday, but today, not leaving town, driving 82 four times. So, you know, one-third is pass-through, the other third starts or stops the traffic.
I don't know, $400 million to $500 million, it's probably in that order. You know, new alignment roadways in mountain terrain that address environmental issues responsibly are going to be more than $10 million a mile and probably in the order. By the time you're tunneling, you're at, you know, I don't know, 30 to 50, but...
Oh, they're going two miles?
Yeah. You just...
That's 20 million.
Well, yeah. I don't know. I mean, I think that it's, you know, it's certainly in the $10 million, it's probably over $100 million. I don't know if it's $400 million to $500 million. I think you'd have to actually do the studies.
There is a cost estimate in the corridor optimization plan, or the study. It's, I think it was about $290 million and it didn't have right-of-way takes in there and it did not have, you know, the construction engineering to build it.
Okay, there's one more question over here.
Thank you. I have an observation and then a question. One is my own personal and hopefully the community's overriding concern. CDOT has created a catalyst for us. I think one of the problems here is it's a catalyst driven by CDOT's need, not Glenwood's. And Glenwood doesn't have a plan. So we have no way of dictating or proactively saying to CDOT, here's how your plan matches ours. And I would hope that this catalyst would lead us, not just council, because most of us aren't willing to run for council, to slow down the process to whatever it takes, Joe, to say, here's a more comprehensive picture of what Glenwood wants, from pedestrians, bikes, other traffic routes downtown, and then see how it fits. And we're missing that and that's why I think there's so much problem with this process. The overriding question I think should be, when it's all done, whether we give a green light or not, is Glenwood better off for this or is just Highway 82 better off? And my question, my specific question in the plea is, and I know it sounds strange and I've said this to council, is I truly believe we should put the access plan totally on hold. I have heard repeatedly that the bridge and access plan are separate processes, separate budgets, and directly have nothing to do with each other. When the access plan came up, which is totally unintelligible to the average layperson, I understand transportation engineers can read through all that. The problem is it has diverted the issue and attention of the town and has confused this. So I would hope, my question would be, can you take it off the table?
You're saying, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's a question.
Can we take it off the table?
Or can we? Not you. Can we?
Can we? Can, can City of Glenwood take it off the table? Yes, you can. And that's something we can't do. I hope that's not the case because, quite frankly, the plan is, it is a good plan and it's a flexible plan. And if we, by chance, if we just mess it completely up, we have a mechanism in the plan to allow change in the plan. So that's the great thing about this. It's flexible. It's a living document. So yes, we can stop it right now and not do anything, but we're losing opportunities and that's the biggest thing. We're losing opportunities for, for not CDOT, for your town.
And I wouldn't say kill it. I'd say turn it off to the side and wait because Glenwood isn't ready for it yet.
So there's a question, so the question is, so one, he's kind of answered around taking it off the table now, what about the implications of delaying?
Can we delay the process? Absolutely. We can delay it. There is implications of delaying it. You know, once you put a plan on the shelf or delay it, it's, you have to restart it and that takes resources, money, time, and effort to get it back on to be a productive plan. That means relooking at everything, making sure, all that stuff. If that's what you want to do, or if the town wants to do that, you can do that. But we have a pretty good foundation of what, I mean, we spent a lot of time on this. I mean, we really have. And taking a look at it and putting it off, I don't think is a responsible thing. That's my personal opinion. I think the plan allows you the flexibility to, if there are changing elements. If, if the caverns decides to build south of town and it becomes Walt Disney World, we can change it. Those are, those are things that we can change, that we don't have any way of knowing today.
Okay, so the answer is it can be...
Does the change process take as long as the implementation?
No, no.
Okay, so the answer is it can be taken off the table. It can be delayed and there are implications with that delay. So I think that was well stated. So do you want to just add a quick comment and then we're going to...
Very quick. You know, there is access control right now. It's very stringent and it's called the access code. And you're guaranteed a right in, right out. And, you know, access control, I think, you know, it's about the words. It doesn't sound very friendly, does it? It's access control, but it's basically, it takes input. So I think, you know, making sure that you can get your inputs in and make sure that you get the plan that you want. And again, knowing that it can be modified and I know there's people out there that, you know, feel like, oh, you might lose my left turn for my business, I'm sunk, it's going to kill me. And I think the key message is, as long as you haven't redeveloped that, you're going to have the same access that you have right now unless there's, you know, some overriding serious, you know, a lot of people start getting killed is one of our other questions.
Okay. We're going to, do you have a, oh, okay. Now, I'm going to, we're actually going to move on and we're going to come back. Don't worry. Look, we're all in this together. Remember, the agreement we had at the beginning is I am trying to get us through a series of topics and then what we're going to do is open it up entirely for an entire hour of just question and answer. But you guys have given us through the focus groups, a lot of good stuff to get through and I want to make sure we're having an informed discussion. So I'm going to do that.
Clark, before you leave this, I'd like to make a comment. I think the only people that are excited about the access control plan of city council, who you're vaunting hates it.
Okay, so here we go. Let's, let's do, let's do a little bit more work here on a couple of these other issues. Again, we're almost through here. I'm crossing off questions, folks. Joe, you've spoken a little bit to, we're shifting into the bridge here. We've sort of been there a little bit. I've already crossed out some of our questions. Help us understand the current conditions of the bridge in as brief and simple a way as you can. Tell us where we are and also include, you've mentioned functionally and structurally obsolete. Just tell us what that means.
Okay, basically, functionally obsolete's a little bit more difficult to think about it. It has to do with how people get over it and around it and things that are near it. So, you know, the lane width, substandard, again, nine foot four and a half, not 12, the fact that there's no shoulders, the fact that there is not a good detour route that enters into it, the fact that it pinches down I-70 and creates a non-standard eastbound on-ramp as well as a non-standard westbound off-ramp. Those are all things that drive that functional obsolescence piece. Vertical clearances with the railroad and with Seventh Street. Go take a look underneath the bridge at Seventh Street. You can see a lot of date marks in places where the truck driver just didn't get it right and luckily didn't knock one of the girders off or damage it severely. The structural piece is a little bit easier to understand. Those are built on spread footings. That footing out in the middle of the river is about seven feet below the bottom of the riverbed. In 1992, there was a scour hole, an erosion of the water. We wrote it out of hole, two feet below the bottom of that footing. I think we had a close call there. That's one of the issues. There's obviously, if you walk around, you can see corroded rebar sticking out. There's fatigue issues. It's only got about, again, remember, it was built in '53, it's a two-lane road. If that was, you know, a new bridge, it right now only has about 55% of the strength of what a new bridge would be out there.
Okay. So it, so the bridge, is it structurally unsafe to date?
No. If it were, it would be posted or closed.
Okay. But it's in a bad enough state of condition that it's been identified as a bridge that needs to be replaced?
That's correct.
Okay. So another question that's related to this is, what would be the challenge of just fixing the existing bridge?
We looked really hard at that. There's a report out on our website. Hopefully, anyone that's not seen our website, there's a lot of really good information on it. Again, you got it, we have to. I don't know if anyone's ever had to deal with the railroad, but they win. It's that simple. If we're going to do that kind of a rehab on it, we have to get the required grade, it's about a foot, it needs to be about a foot higher. And also Seventh Street again drives that vertical piece as well. So we would be removing essentially all of the deck. We would have to work on the girders. Those are riveted girders. They have fatigue issues with them. And if, you know, the fatigue life is, if you don't do anything, they've got about 38 more years, I think is what the report says. If you're going to do a rehab of it and change those out, the fatigue issue immediately takes place and you would have to change all those connections over to be non-fatigue susceptible, so.
So Dan, same type of questions. We're getting a little bit more detailed into the specifics of the projects, but in terms of where we are in the decision-making process, there's been a lot of questions around sort of, you know, what stakes are in the ground? You said we're about 90% of the way through. We just had the question about delaying. So, I mean, where, where are we at the point in the process where if we, if we, I guess maybe just start at that. We're close to the end, but help us understand if things were going smoothly, what would happen next?
Where we're, where we're at, at the end. Right now, we're looking, we have a draft plan in place. Just to clarify, we do show Eight Street as being signalized in our draft plan. So that, that's a change that probably everybody needs to know. And that was actually voted by the council to put that as the draft plan. So we do show Eighth Street, we show Ninth Street as being signalized, and we show Eleventh Street being signalized at this point. We are going to city council on April 11th to get their buy-in on the plan and get their input on it, if they agree with it or not agree with it.
Okay. So another question about the access control plan, and Jim, this one's actually for you. We've heard already tonight a couple of people that are concerned about connectivity and being able to walk. Can you just talk a little bit about the connection between connectivity in the downtown, walkability in the downtown and an access control plan? What are some of the key issues to be thinking about?
Well, from the point of view of the downtown, you need excellent access and circulation within the downtown for cars and pedestrians and transit and bicycles. And pedestrian is the most important in that hierarchy and downtowns have to be walkable. So it's really, I don't think I ever and would never advocate for a traffic solution in downtown that reduce the pedestrian circulation. You don't want to be in a position where you said, we used to have a downtown that we had the road. And so the, I don't think that's, my advice to the city would be that that's not negotiable. You need, you need pedestrian access. I'm not sure I understand, though, the...
We'll just talk to some of the issues. Okay, so specifically, signalization came up and you just brought up how one of the challenges or questions was losing signalization, signalization at Eighth, taking away the traffic signal and that would impact pedestrian abilities to cut a runs. Are there other things besides that, Jim, that would affect pedestrian movement that people should be thinking about in terms of, you know, if we move forward with the access control plan, can we make it the best darn access control plan it could ever be?
Well, I think, other than the, there was a, an idea at some point in time of installing median in the middle of Grand Avenue in downtown. Now, again, it's a suburban design, it's not a downtown design. Downtown streets don't have plans and reasons to, certainly main streets don't. So, so, once you take that off the table, which is, I think we've tried to do, the only remaining sort of issue is the signalization. Now, what I'm hearing tonight is no signal at Ninth and Tenth, and I think that has implications for the new parking garage and access to it. So I think that's going to be something that maybe needs to be discussed more. Vehicle circulation is good, too. I mean, parked cars is one of the places pedestrians come from. And so it's one of the ways you create pedestrians, is you provide a place where people can get out of their car and walk around, sprint, run. So as far as the sidewalks, downtown, you know, the sidewalks along Grand Avenue are not bad sidewalks and in many ways they function. We've looked at some things along where the bridge will touch down at Eighth. How can we soften the impact of that? How can we shield the sidewalks in the remaining space from the vehicles? It's bad. The Seventh Street we talked about. I think there are a lot of opportunities for Glenwood to improve the pedestrian and walk environment in downtown. I don't know if I'm answering your question.
No, no, you are. That was good and that's probably good to tee up in a couple of minutes, the slides you have to show some of those concepts. But let's, before we do that, we've heard a little bit from, from both Joe and Dan, some more, a little bit more information about the bridge and... some more, a little bit more information about the bridge and the access control plan. I would have tried to combine those to give you guys a chance to talk some more. So let's go ahead and take a couple more questions on those topics. Go ahead.
When I hear Seadot talking in... Sorry.
I'm here.
I hear a lot about timeframes and timetables and studies and everything. But again, as a citizen, I don't see that the citizens are being hurt. Sutter just had something to say and was completely run over, but again, by timetables and cost and this. But that wasn't what the concern was. I'm wondering how sensitive you are, really, to the concerns of the people who live here. I've gone to many of these meetings and I continuously hear about your timetables, your concerns, the money being spent. But I don't hear the concerns of the people being considered. I also have, my question is also, months ago, we were promised a 3D look at what this hall was gonna look like. And I have never seen it. And I wonder, is this going to happen or is it not going to happen? And again, the slowdown process is very important to many people here. I really don't care about your timetables. It's not important enough to what it is to the citizens that live here, who need more time.
So two questions really around timetable and just, you know, a timetable from Seadot and coming from the Denver office and how that meshes with the community interest. And second question around the 3D model?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's tackle the model question first. I really have to apologize. I really was hopeful that we'd have it sooner. The piece that shows downtown actually is on its way here. And it will be in town, you know, I believe either this week or next week for the city council meeting. It'll show the different... It's got four different options that we've talked about at the different council meetings. You know, either a six-foot ADA ramp that comes down similar to like the ADA ramp does right now off of Head Bridge. Comes down parallel to the bridge. There's a six-foot wide version. There's a 10-foot wide. There's one that shows a right-in, right-out with no ADA ramp there. And there's also, you know, it shows the different scissors ramp that would go east-west. There's also, you know, it shows the elevator option as well. Within a month, we'll have that other whole one that shows it going across the river and how it ties in over on the north side. So again, my apologies. I wish that we had it sooner. I love models, you know. Snowass Canyon was my first project as a resident engineer. And we built a model right away. You know, the last project that I physically ran with Shell Bluffs, we built a model on that. And it just helps a lot to be able to look at it.
In terms of timeframe, really, I'm thinking what you're asking is implementation of the plan. There is no timetable on implementation. It's a long-term plan. It's the look. It's to... If there's development, we have a plan in place, how development will look. If nothing happens, nothing happens. Now, there's one area where it does matter, and that's the bridge at Eight Street. That is gonna be something in the future. Whatever we decide on Eight Street, that will probably be implemented when the bridge gets built.
You just wonder how sensitive you are to what the citizens keep saying. I hear over and over again, including myself, "We don't wanna deal with all this together." This has come together, the access control plan and the bridge, and it's a lot for this town to deal with. And we're asking that at least one be put off. I've heard it again and again. How sensitive are you to those questions?
And I... Me personally, I'm very sensitive to it. I wanna tell you that there are decisions made out there. We have a state highway access code. That's state law. There is no flexibility in it. It's how it works. And the issue is, if a landowner decides to develop, they can greatly impact their next-door neighbor or even people down the block by the decisions that they make. This access control plan gives us a fair look, the entire look of the corridor. So that's what we're really trying to do, is we're trying to look at the entire plan, the blueprint for Glenwood. And if nothing happens, nothing happens. So if, you know, I guess what I would like to say, it's really, really important to look at this as a plan. In terms of implementation, we're not looking to implement it anytime soon. We have to have a plan. If we don't have a plan, it's a willy-nilly kind of thing. And the access code, you know, it will help this person and it will hinder that person. And that's not a very equitable way of doing it.
So just to be clear, Dan, what you're saying is the access code, if somebody does redevelop their property, that kicks in and they have to follow that code. So there's basically one code or the other. And you're trying to differentiate between one is a code and one is a locally, more locally driven?
That's exactly right. It's a community-driven. I mean, we have talked on land use, and Seadot doesn't get into land use. We don't even talk about land use. Here's our opportunity. This is one of the few tools in our tool belt that we can actually look at land use and the transportation and balance those things. And it's a good thing. It really is.
But it sounds like you are saying you are sensitive to the fact that for a community our size, it feels like, boy, a lot is happening. And just judging from your first answer, you're saying, yeah, you get that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Before I go over there, I wanna make sure we... Yeah, go ahead.
I'm concerned that we are more focusing on the present and disregarding the future. If you look at what is coming, obviously, traffic on Grand Avenue is steadily increasing and will continue to increase as a valley develops more and more. What we're dealing with is more and more cars trying to get through that bottleneck, which is Grand Avenue. We're trying to keep the speed limit at 25 miles an hour. That's been talked about. I think it's a myth because as more traffic piles up, at 25 miles an hour, it can't get through town fast enough, as fast as it is accumulating. We're seeing that already when you look at the afternoon traffic coming down Grand Avenue and how far it's backed up. On the other hand, we don't have a highway to back that traffic up onto. It will be backing up onto the interstate because people can't get off the interstate and get into and through Glenwood Springs as fast as the cars are accumulating and when you're holding the speed limit at 25. So Seadot will be back and they'll say, "We gotta raise the speed limit because we gotta keep those cars off the interstate." So this is an issue that I think is very significant and tells us that sooner or later, we're gonna have to do something about getting more roadway for more cars to get through town. And we'd ought to be thinking about that. And the thing about it is that we're sacrificing Glenwood Springs by postponing the inevitable.
Anybody wanna take a stab at commenting on that?
Well, Hal, I think, you know, as we talked earlier, they are mutually exclusive, the bridge replacement, system quality piece, and this overarching mobility issue. And, you know, I think that's where there's this planning process. And like I mentioned in my opening statement, you know, the consultant for the city, he and I presented at the Transportation Commission. Here's, you know, the order optimization plan got approved, ratified, and specific steps were lined out. Do some of the low-hanging fruit. Let local trips have local roads and not be on State Highway 82. You know, kind of broke it into like, you know, here's what you can do in zero to five years. Here's what you can do in five to 10 years. And then the 10 years out is probably when you'd have the funding. Hopefully, again, Jim, you know, I think we both have maybe a little bit better information on, you know, what happened, what's going on with the Highway User Trust Fund. That's what funds the federal government. You know, the 18.4 cents per gallon hasn't gone up since like '92. The gas, the price of gasoline has certainly gone up. We get 22 cents a gallon in Colorado. That hasn't gone up either in that timeframe. So the funding is not out there. Seadot's in a maintenance mode is the reality. So, you know, once this planning effort really starts to gel and you get, you know, the consensus within the community to move forward and get the elected officials, if, you know, if that's the way it goes and it's brought to the state, then we'll start talking about those kinds of things. But again, it's not automatically a bypass or a relocation. It's gonna be an EIS in the end, most likely. And it's gonna look at the whole range of alternatives.
Looks like we're kicking the can down the road.
And that's exactly the term a couple of people used in the focus groups. And that's a good question. It's actually a perfect transition into sort of the final topic, which is, kind of opens it up for all of us here, which is, you know, are we kicking the can down the road? Are we doing these individual projects without an eye for a larger strategy? Are we not thinking big about sort of movement and transportation and mobility in Glenwood Springs? And, you know, if we don't do that, are we, like Hal says, just kicking the can down the road? And the other question I'd add to that, though, that came from the focus groups, because it really was, it was very interesting, very differing perspectives among everybody around these topics, is, as Hal said, I think he said, you know, "We have to build more roadway to make that happen." Does it come down to that or is there other options, too? So I would like each of you all to comment on this question of, are we kicking the can down the road? And sort of what are our options if we were to think about figuring out Glenwood Springs and larger regions' transportation challenges going long-term? Who wants to start?
Well, I can't. I think it's fair. The... We... Nobody knows. You know, you've seen how good we are at predicting the future. I mean, we're not able to do that. Nobody can do that. The trends are that we... Vehicle miles traveled have not grown. They've been flat since 2006 nationwide. We saw annual growth in traffic on our roads in the United States, ranging from 2% to 3% nationwide for 50 years. And so we just assumed that that will always be the case, but it's not happening anymore. There are demographic reasons for that. Baby boomers are driving less. And the millennials are less enthusiastic about driving. Millennials, the rate of auto ownership...
What were millennials, real quick?
That's the second generation now. Everybody knows it's millennials. There are several in the audience. The... It's the largest generation in U.S. history. It's actually larger than the baby boom generation. The baby boom generation and millennials make up the vast bulk of the population and most of the spending power. So we know that we should not, you know, that I believe the bridge study assumed a flat 2% or a cumulative, 2% cumulative growth rate of growth. I'm skeptical of that. Hal, I know you're right, that we also probably haven't seen any sprawl and will probably see more world development in the valley above us. And that will drive some traffic growth. So, you know, even though traffic overall nationwide is not growing, we may have localized instances of traffic growing. And so it's hard to know for sure. We do... The economy has changed and the economics of development has changed and where people build and what they build is changing. And we just don't have a good read on that yet. The funding is changing radically. It used to be that the money came to the states in the formula flow and the states made the decisions. We're moving increasingly towards merit-based discretionary grants that are made in Washington. And the formula money is going almost entirely to rehab and the three-hour, four-hour kinds of programs of restoration and maintenance and so forth.
Just for people, formula money is money that would have...
It's divided up nationally, based on population and things like that. So it's divided up among the states and just sent to the states without any strings attached. Very few strings attached. You know, so I would say that the successful communities, and I feel like we work for some of them, are very opportunistic. They are very strategic and they are out in front. And I do think the point that's been made by several of you tonight that it's, there's not a clear plan. I live in Boulder and we wrote one of the major transportation master plans for Boulder. And if you stop somebody who lives in Boulder on the street and say, "What's the plan in Boulder for transportation?", they know the answer. We have some of our... We bring people in for tours, although it's one of the comments they make is that, wow, we can't believe the way people in Boulder actually know what the plan is and they understand. They may not all agree with it, but they know what the plan is. I do think that Garkham County in general and Glenwood in particular would benefit from more strategic planning about their transportation system and what the future of the transportation system should be. And that would help you when you come to some of these really tough issues like the bridge.
Chip, Clark told me, I can't call you an idiot, but I'd call you an idiot to tell you why.
Okay. I want to know.
But I kind of have a tendency to disagree with you when you talk about this because when you look at the millennials, you look at the baby boomers, everybody who's got some free time, they wanna go recreate with someplace. And if you look at the example of what Seadot's done to us on I-70, A Basin, Keystone, Cocker Mountain, Bayou, Beaver Creek and Loveland, that they think those weren't gonna grow, that they think they're just gonna have their measly thousands of skiers every weekend. And when you look at what I-70 is and what they've done for a project now, what they're gonna do is gonna solve some of the problems, but it's not gonna solve all of it. And we look at the Roaring Fork Valley. People like to come here to recreate. They love to go to Aspen. They love to go up Valley. That's just what Hal's talking about, more traffic on Grand Avenue. I believe Seadot has a rule that says, if the speed limit is 35 miles an hour and they do a traffic study and it is doing 32 miles an hour, they can raise the speed limit to 30, hands down. Am I wrong, Joe?
I didn't follow that.
Well, if the speed limit is 25 miles an hour, they do a traffic survey and it's doing 32 because the police are not controlling it. And if that's what general traffic is, they can raise it somewhere between the 25 and where it's going.
You're basically right there. It's called... We do a speed study and what we set it at is the 85th percentile of what people are actually going. We did have some good conversations in city council. We listened. We agreed to not go into a speed study and we kept the speed where it was. Again, that was just part of the partnership with the city that we enjoy.
Let me make a quick point about that, too, because I think it's a valid concern and I share that concern. But realize that most of the day, the speed of the traffic through the town is limited by the traffic signals and the spacing of the traffic signals and the congestion. So, I mean, I think that to some degree congestion is your friend in that respect. The... Most of the speeding on Grand Avenue is gonna occur in the off-duty.
Joe and I both found out that now that we are limited by our speed, not by the congestion, by the people who flew, police. But what Hal was saying is, when we get this traffic backed up on I-70, what are you gonna do with it? Leave it backed up on I-70? Because Seadot's whole program is to move traffic. And the only way to get moving is to raise the speed limit so it doesn't... It's more in Grand Avenue.
Thanks, Clark. You're shaking your head. Do you want to just do a quick comment on that? Because there has been this question of, you know, ease of movement versus efficiency of traffic flow. It's come up several times. And then we have a question right back here.
You know, I definitely can understand the point of view that traffic could increase there. But the analysis, what we've done, doesn't show that. The average speed, long-term, is gonna be about 19 miles an hour. That's the average based on... And you might be laughing here, but this is based on, this is a 20-year projection based on a growth rate, and I think it's 2%. But whatever it is, we know that there's gonna be some growth out there. It might take 20 years, 25 years, or it might take 15 years to get to that growth rate, depending on what it is. But the reality is congestion, I would agree with my colleague over here that says congestion is your friend. I just don't see us raising the speed limit. And that's not how we operate. We don't operate to move traffic by raising the speed limit.
Okay. So the next question is back here.
You know, I live on Lake Street. The longest straight street in Glenwood Springs is the alternative bypass. All through these things, I... All through these things, I never hear about, about the concern about the people that live back there. We're the densest, the most, the multiracial, the, have more elderly, it's the easiest place to find a place to rent and the cheapest to buy. And it's an ideal place to live in Glenwood Springs, but you're fixing that for us because you can hardly cross Lake Street. And we take all the gas. Lake Street will be first, Cooper will be second, Colorado will be third, and it'll be unlivable after a while. Whenever this Grand Avenue fills up, both streets are maxed too. And it's not fair, you know? It's not fair. It's a, it's a, it's a sham to put all those people out there in somebody else's neighborhood when the bulk of you live out in the woods someplace and drive back in town, back and forth to town all the time. But it's just not fair, that's all there is.
So, so, it sounds like one of the concerns you really have is around, you know, as traffic fills up on Grand Avenue, there's more and more stress and pressure on some of the side streets of the neighborhoods, right? See some other people nodding their heads. So, it would be interesting to hear, you know, from some of the panelists about that tension, is that, how can we address that? And, you know, the other thing that I'll say is pretty interesting is, from other people at the focus groups, we heard, "We need to figure out how to use those side streets better because that's a way of getting some of the traffic on Grand Avenue." So, it'd be interesting to hear, is there any comment on that? The impact of neighborhoods versus the impact on the downtown and grand?
Clark, you're just hearing what the citizens say that live here.
I know.
I would say, yeah. I mean, it's a problem, it's a problem in a lot of cities, it's a problem here. I see locals know how to avoid Grand Avenue, so they come down one of those sides, go to 70, use that to get to the bridge, prostrate, take it or whatever. Locals know how to avoid that, so that does increase the traffic on the other, on the neighborhood streets and that is uncomfortable and it probably will increase.
Oh, it surely will increase.
Okay, we're in here. You know, on that score, I have the feeling that we've lost control of Grand Avenue and I think everybody would agree with that. And as Hal was describing what he saw as the future, what I'd like to see as the future, but it's something that suddenly really throws a lot of, not grease in it, but a lot of concrete glue in our situation. I see so many automobiles a split second after the red light turns on, speeding through, putting down their gas pedal. I'd like to see that stop, but if we do that, we're going to slow traffic. And I'm a little bit facetious when I say this, but I've got the impression that the city police write tickets on the city's cow paths and not on Grand Avenue. So, if they really control Grand Avenue, then aren't we really making it worse or are we making it better?
Do you want to comment back?
I do. I'm a pedestrian and I can tell you, you talk 25 miles an hour and there is no one does it nowadays. And it was in the paper a while back, and I think it was Kim and I said, "The average speed is 25 to 35. Signs from 8th Street down to Safeway say 25 and no one does it." No, I mean, do people disagree with me? Hal's saying 25. The sign says 25. No one goes that.
So, some further? See a lot of nodding around, around traffic speeds.
I will tell you one more thing. Last week, one time, I crossed where you cross at Bysayer Park, you push a button. Each way I crossed, but you learn to wait if you're a pedestrian. Trucks were going too fast, they couldn't stop for the red light and they were going through on the walk, both ways.
When it's your signal to walk?
Yes. And people live on the east side, the west side. When you go anyplace in town, you pretty much have to go on Grand Avenue. And the, okay, Midland, last week, I'm going down it, what I think's the bright speed, the sign flashes, I was going 26 miles an hour, but they don't keep traffic at 25 on Grand, even though they have signs.
Do you want to add to that? Can we have a mic over here?
Well, as I sit here and listen tonight, the word that keeps coming up for me is trust, and I think that's one of the problems that we've got. CDOT doesn't have a history of having trustful behavior. So, when you tell me that the access plan is about maximizing pedestrian or bike access as being a good part of it, and then you take lights out and you make it so that the access is severely limited, then it's like, how does a pedestrian exactly get across Grand? It's not safe. And I agree with Ann. And I live on Grand, so I can tell you that people aren't going 19 miles an hour. So, when you say things like that, it makes us not trust CDOT. It makes us not trust that you've looked at options, that you have made decisions that are in our best interest. The difference is, and Sheila has noted and Sumner noted and other people, we're interested in what's good for our community. And it's absolutely right. We don't have a plan for fixing that now, but that's what we're asking for. Slow down, get a strategic plan together so that we know what's important. For us, our community is what's important for you, and we get this. Moving traffic is what's important, but we have different goals in mind. We don't want to lose our community because we have a gigantic bridge. We're not necessarily against a bridge, but maybe we don't need that big of a bridge, maybe it doesn't need to be there. We want to feel confident that the choices that are made are choices that are in our best interest. And it feels like CDOT is pushing their best interest and telling us that they're on our side, but not necessarily that that's the case. The trust needs to be mended and I'm not seeing that this process is about that.
Okay, do you guys want to, I want you guys to, everybody remember, you know, transportation engineers have feelings too. So, again, we want to try and be, I think everybody has really valid concerns and that's very fair. Remember, try to be as kind and respectful as we can. I want you guys to go ahead and answer to that.
I can't say a thing because I'm on her team. Return to him.
In regards to trust and, well, we, I, that's a tough thing, how to answer that because I really, down in my soul, really, really feel, you know, as Glenwood Springs is my partner and it's actually my spouse. That's how I look at it. And I tell you what, trust is a very important thing for me and I try very hard to meet that trust. So, for me, it's a, it's very personal and I try to work with local governments because it's such, I get a lot more stuff done with local governments and court. So, for me, I have to have the trust. So, I need to, I guess I need to convey it better for you.
Cheryl, trust is a big deal for me too. I've lived here since 1983. I moved here to work on the canyon. You know, as we've been going through this, this project, I constantly hear people, you know, "Is it going to be this bridge? You know, we're going to replace this piece of failing infrastructure and make it a better community, you know, take the pigeons out of that space down there under 7th Street and make it something that's livable and walkable, you know, based on stakeholder input and do something at least as nice as the canyon." I really feel like you can trust us to do that. We're going to do it.
Joe, it's not about you guys as individuals, it's about CDOT being an entity that has a particular goal in mind, which is moving traffic through Glenwood Springs as fast and as efficiently as it can. Maybe that's not the community's real interest. And so, a strategic plan that would define that is what we're interested in producing that talks to all of these issues. And that feels like that's a nifty thing.